I'd like to welcome everyone to New Market Town Council Public Hearing scheduled for this evening, August 10, 2011. I'd like to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, before we get started with the public hearing, I'd like to read the notice. The New Market Town Council will hold a public hearing to solicit input from residents on the use of water department capital reserve funds to undertake a pilot study of the Macintosh well. The project will operate the well under the same conditions and timeframe it will operate within, within, operate when online. Further, the town will have an understanding of the full-scale treatment costs and expected water quality from the Macintosh well should the electrolyosis?
Electrolysis.
Electrolysis reversal, EDR, treatment be chosen or the results of blending with existing sources. The well pilot project would have been one component undertaken had the bond authorization warrant Article II passed. Because the article failed to obtain the necessary two-thirds majority but did receive a majority vote, the council is seeking inputs from residents to move forward, undertake this study so as to have a definitive answer to water quality and need for treatment versus blending. And just for the record, Article II vote, 689, yes, 400, no.
Sixty-three percent.
And that was sixty-three percent. So with that, I'll open it up for public comments. Mr. Fayen. Name an address, please, for the record.
Langley Fielding, 3 Lafayette Ave. I've been reading these reports and whatever, and from the very beginning, I guess I really questioned whether the need for this water to be treated. When we initially started, when it was initially started, there was a question, well, maybe it won't meet the primary secondary standards, state standards, and the Emery Garrett evidently showed that it will meet after a period of pumping. Then the next discussion was, well, the water is probably, it has much different characteristics than the Sewell Bennett wells. Well, it would have. The Sewell Bennett well is stratified drift aquifers where the water, basically you have rainwater, runs through gravel, and goes, gets pumped into the system. This is Rockwell where you drill down 500 feet and you have water that's been sitting there for many years and has accumulated a lot of chemicals in it. So they do have entirely different chemical composition. The question is whether this water is, was, tastes as good as, will taste good, period, I guess, that's the thing. And I'm, the, the aquifer that this has been taken out of, which is basically our fast swamp road, it's, there's been 30 wells put in there in the last 20, 30 years, and not one of them has come up with drinkable or bad tasting water. And you have to ask, well, how can we have 30 wells, we have good tasting water and everything, and everyone's happy with them, had no problems with hot water systems or any other stuff? Why the towns is so much different? I think one thing that hasn't been tested is, is it different? I guess the, one thing I would like to pass to the council here is, is a copy of, uh-oh, not going to work. This is basically, I like. Copy of the production well, drawdowns, and wells from Southern Domestic Supplies there that Emery Garrett put together. These show that when Emery Garrett did their pump tests, as soon as they started pumping, like the Macintosh well, Emery Garrett put pismeters in dozens of these wells to see the effect the drawdown would have. And as soon as they started pumping the Macintosh wells, these dozen of, so these wells started dropping immediately when they started pumping a Macintosh well. Some of these wells are 20, 200, 3,000 feet away, and here, as soon as you started pumping a Macintosh well, the Tucker well, they started dropping, and they dropped as long as you kept the well pumping, whether it was six-day test or 35-day test. After you stop pumping, the Macintosh and the Tucker well came back to their original levels, and so these, all these other wells did. So to me, it clearly shows to me that you're in the same aquifer, you're in the same bucket of water, really, and so I just find it hard to see why, if all these other wells have good tasting water, why the Macintosh well, we talk mostly about the Macintosh well now, why it should not taste good? And I think something should be done at some time in the future, is the town should hire a water testing company and test these wells, several of the wells, especially those that showed a significant drawdown, and one of them, when the well went down, drew down 120 feet, the private well dropped 60 feet. It's, I think that would be, would tell the board something as to both the chemical composition and, basically, I think when you did that, if you drew water and put it out here and put them unmarked, I think most of you people couldn't tell the difference between one well and the other, and if you put samples of the Sewell Bennett well there, I don't think you'd find any of them that are really bad tasting. I think there really wasn't enough testing to even be considering treatment now. If you look at the Emery Garrett report, if you look at the results of the, both the chlorides, the arsenic, and the sodium and manganese, you would find that during their tests, the concentrations dropped significantly over the 35-day test, and at the end of the 35-day test, they dropped from above the secondary standard, but after 33 days, they were well below, and they were still dropping significantly. They hadn't stopped, or even slowed down, they were ready to drop. They got down, chlorides would get down to 200, but they were still dropping four, five milligrams per liter every day. I think to say, well, we're going to have a problem with the chlorides or the sodium, we really don't know, know at where this, these waters would level off. Might be 100, might be 150 milligrams per liter, we don't know. And I think to start talking about spending a million and a half dollars to treat this water until we know this data, I don't think is reasonable. I guess I can show you the four, five charts in the meeting, you can show these for the, how the manganese and the chlorides and arsenic was dropped, some dropped more than the others, but the, the arsenic, I mean, the chlorides and the sodium really dropped a lot. The arsenic, which is a primary condition for the state standard, never got above the 1.1 milligrams per liter, and the, it dropped, I guess it averaged, Emery Garrett said it dropped, it averaged .08 through the outcast, it dropped, sometimes it dropped to .06. And I guess, I guess that gets me to the, the Weston and Sampson, I, we, I'm on the Capital Improvement Program Committee, as some of you may know, and we asked the administrator having a meeting tomorrow on the CIP to give us reports of water and sewer and everything so we could start discussing them, and I see this one from Weston and Sampson, their reasons why they feel just doing disinfection and pH adjustment was not adequate. Their first was, based on limited water quality, appears that NDS would, would require the Macintosh to be taken offline when pumping levels of arsenic is .01 milligrams or higher. Mathematics don't compute in my mind. If you have at .01 or the average .006, if you mix that with water with a tenth, the arsenic level of your well, you shouldn't be getting more than .01. I mean, you should be getting water way down below the level. I guess their second concern was staining complaints from users of high manganese levels. Well, I mean, there's, there's 30 wells, if, if we assume that the, the is the same aquifer, we've had 30 wells that have been pumping over 20 years, and they've had no problems with their washers, their hot water units, and everything else, so it's, you think if that water was a problem, it would have showed up in the last 20 years. The sodium and chloride taste complaints will occur, they haven't shown up yet in 20 years on these wells, and I guess showing those other charts, we really don't know how low the sodium and chlorides will go. Now, they have said, concerned that we really pump 300 gallons a minute for 24 hours a day, and that will not be occurring when the town puts these online. Well, true, but what this, these tests really just, they precipitated what would happen in the longer term and a shorter term. In other words, it would take longer before they drop to these levels, but once they get to these levels, they would stay. The test would show that once you did get down even to the 200 milligrams per liter level for the chlorides, it took three days to get back up to the level that did not meet requirements, and when this thing starts running, you will be running it every day. Most, more than likely be running every day. You may have to, if you shut it down for some period of time, you may have to do a short flushing period, but, I mean, we're talking about spending well over a million and a half dollars to do this, and Weston and Sampson did, at the meeting we had a while back, said that going just disinfection and pH adjustment alone, they're talking about 651,000 to do the job, plus 80,000 engineering contingency, so the total job would be roughly in the 800,000 range. That's a lot less than the three and a half, 3.375 million or something that they are talking about to put in a treating system. One thing, you put in a treating system, you run for a few months, year, oh, we don't need it anymore. You can't get your money back. If you put the sys, if you put the, just the basic system in now, you can run it, and if you had to add, if you found out you had to add treatment later on, you can add it budget committee was given a copy of Justin Richardson's report on this, and I guess later on. So that's why, to me, I would more support going just, spending the $700,000 to tie I agree with everything he says. the well in, get it tied into the system, and look whether there is any complaints, Let me read it. "Special warrant articles, the purpose of appropriation are defined in RSA 325. what's the results are going to be, and I, I think people would, there'll be no, no complaints, Purpose means a goal to be accomplished through the expense of public funds." "Special warrant articles define if any article on the warrant proposing appropriation basically, whatever. includes an appropriation amount to be raised." "Warrant articles consider their purpose of appropriation. A state in the statute, separate vote shall not affect the government's legal authority." I agree with all of that. In this, what I disagree with, "In this case, the town meeting did not eliminate the purpose or reduce the amount to be appropriated to zero." Town meeting is in two sections. The deliberative session, he's right, the deliberative session did not eliminate the purpose or reduce the amount to be appropriated to zero. However, the, the voting section did reduce the amount, eliminate the purpose and reduce the amount to zero. I guess, let me see. He would be correct if he used the 1996 version of Chapter 32, Section 10, but in 2004, the legislature added the quote, "No means no" law, and, and the attorneys, when he reduced the amount appropriated to zero, that was the end of it, in the 1996 article, but in 2004, the legislature added, "Or does not approve an appropriation contained in a separate article, that purpose or article shall be deemed one for which no appropriation made and no amount shall be transferred to or expended for this purpose." That was the, was added in 2004, which is the no means low, no law. And no means no, anything that was planned to be done under that warrant article is, cannot be done. The reason they passed a no means no law is just what you people are trying to do. In the past, they would put articles on a warrant, whatever, and then if the, did not pass, the select mayor or council, whatever, would say, ah, we'll use the money from someplace else to do it. And that's why the legislature passed a no means no law, because they felt that that was not correct. If the people voted down an appropriation, voted down a purpose, let's see, the purpose of this article was to connect the Macintosh well to the town water system and put in treatment for it. The no means no says you, you can't connect it to the system and you can't put in treatment, in my opinion, that's the way. And on a budget can be 25 years, and when the no means no law came in, we did have classes on it, and it was emphatic, no means no. If the people vote an article down, whatever, you cannot spend money on that article until it gets reversed. I guess, I guess I have some other things, but I guess that's as much as I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fayen. Anyone else for?
May I ask Mr. Fayen a question?
We'll do that after.
Do we have any questions?
I'd like to, just get the public hearing done, and then we can, as councilors, go with questions and stuff. Anyone else from the public?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if you were going to respond to Leo's first. I wasn't sure if they were going to respond to your comments first before I spoke, but, Bill O'Cherry, 155, Exeter Road. Guess it's too bad it's only Leo and I here from the public, and I have not invested much time or have as much knowledge as Leo does on this process, but I am a water guy and I'm curious on the process. I only have a few questions. Number one, the status of the Tucker well, I wasn't sure what, whether that's been eliminated from the process and why, and, you know, has there been a study done about the cost benefits of Macintosh versus Tucker? Two, you know, I understand, you know, the, the purpose of this study is several-fold. One is to, I guess, to do a more long-term pumping test and to see how water quality changes and improves, hopefully, and then to test the, test the treatment system or the electrolysis, I guess. And I wondered, you know, if, if there was another treatment mechanism that was close to the cost and the maintenance of electrolysis, or that was borderline, you know, whether that should be also evaluated as part of this pilot study. I don't know the numbers of, if we've run the cost on maintenance and the electrical power required for electrolysis and whatnot, but that was my second question, I guess, and the third was more of, you know, what our status is on our supply as it stands now this summer. We had kind of a dry July, how did we do with the two wells that we have? And I fully appreciate the need for having a third well, a third source, but I, you know, I guess going forward, that case has to be reemphasized to the town, I guess, to, to the, you know, that third source is imperative. That was basically my comments.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Yes, Sean.
I guess to answer some of Bill's questions is, the Tucker well has been looked at, the Macintosh well is the better, is the most logical source. We actually have permitted both wells. We received the Macintosh permit, but we cannot get the Tucker permit until we own the property. So that's where that is. The other thing is that the CIP plan has identified that we need more water, and it's the number one thing on the, on the CIP plan. The reason we are asking to go forward with, to remind everybody why we're going forward with this is, we have met with DES, New Hampshire, or DES, we have met with a private water person and looked at all the analysis, and it comes down to, do we blend or do we do EDR? And that seemed to be the crux of the matter at the town meetings. And the purpose of this is to go forward, is to look at both things, at both technologies, blending versus EDR, looking at, at what the best alternative for, for New Market is. One thing I did want to bring to light today is that I did put an application in for the SRF State Revolving Loan, and we actually qualified for it, so we're actually, would get 20% loan forgiveness on our, which the project is listed at $3,370,000. That was the worst-case scenario we had, so we're looking at, if we did spend that, we would be forgiven $674,000. If it turns out to be a $2 million project, then it would be a $400,000 loan forgiveness. So the other thing is on timing. I know Jeff has tried to get the EDR schedule, you know, when the possibility to get that in here to do it, but looking at time schedule now, is if we said go today on this project, we probably wouldn't see it and looked at the EDR and looked at all that technology, it would, we'd probably have the data ready for the deliberative session this year coming up. If, then come May, if the warrant article goes forward again, if the warrant article fails, I'll have to send a letter to DES saying that we will not be using the money. If the warrant article passes, then the money will become available to us. Then, once that happens, we'd go to design, we're probably looking two years from now before getting a drop of water out of that well. Once the project's complete, it's a year later that we start making payments on it. So I just wanted everybody to know the timeframe. So if we keep putting this off, putting this off, it's, it's going to be a while before we have a well. How are our wells doing now? They're doing fairly well. They've dropped a little bit, they're a little bit below the, the normal 52 operating feet, where we normally are on the Sewell well, we're at about 53 feet, between 53 and 54 feet, but the wells are doing well right now. But that's all dependent on how, you know, if we get rain or if we get a dry time. So I guess that's what I wanted to, just give you a list of the schedule and let us know that, let you know that we've been approved in the SRF program.
Thank you, Sean. Any further public comment? Sure, go ahead. Could you come up, please?
I just, to follow up on your point, Sean, I was wondering, have you been tracking, you know, precipitation and historic, how this season compares historically?
I can talk to that.
Yeah. All right. I had another question, but it was in my mind, but.
Go ahead. If the council is, if I, I can talk to it. If I could, I think it'd probably be best if we wait, and, I mean, I'll, I'll continue to have somewhat of an open dialogue if, if the councilors have questions that they'd like to specifically ask someone. I'll try to keep the dialogue going, but, you know, at some point, I will close the public hearing.
One last question. Just curious on the, the waste byproducts of this treatment system, how we handle that, how that's going to be handled? Is that piped back to the treatment system, or is that something, a sludge that's removed? So, my final question.
Thank you. Jeff, I guess maybe now would be the best time to ask you to come up and just maybe address some of those comments. If you can just, for the people at home that may not be familiar with you, let them know who you are, where you're from and everything.
Okay. Thank you for having me. My name is Jeff McLaurin, Weston Sampson Engineers. I've been working with Sean Gregg for, and with all of you for the past probably year, year and a half now, looking at some of these issues with the well. Just to follow up on your point, Sean, I was wondering, have you been tracking, you know, precipitation and how this season compares historically?
I can talk to that.
Yeah. All right. I had another question, but it left my mind, but.
Go ahead.
If the councilor finds desire, I can talk to it.
If I could, I think it'd probably be best if we wait, and, I mean, I'll continue to have somewhat of an open dialogue if the councilors have questions that they'd like to specifically ask someone. I'll try to keep the dialogue going, but, you know, at some point, I will close the public hearing.
One last question. I'm just curious on the waste byproducts of this treatment system, how we handle that, how that's going to be handled. Is that piped back to the treatment system, or is that something, a sludge that's removed? So, my final question. Thank you. Jeff, I guess maybe now would be the best time to ask you to come up and just maybe address some of those comments. If you can just, for the people at home that may not be familiar with you, let them know who you are, where you're from and everything.
Okay. Thank you for having me. My name's Jeff McLaurin, Weston Sampson Engineers. I've been working with Sean Gregg and with all of you for the past probably year, year and a half now, looking at some of these issues with the wells. To answer some of Bill's questions, specifically with the rainfall, for the town of Hudson, the first of every month, I've actually been for the last two years looking at rainfall and three-month rolling averages in regards to their ability to pump one of their wells. So I'm very familiar with how rainfall trending's been going within the localized southern New Hampshire area, and it has been, a lot of lawns have dried up in this past July, but other than that, it's been a very wet year. Above the 45-year average for rainfall, we were up 2 and 1/2, 3 inches as of a month ago. It came back to level towards the end of July, but we got an inch of rain in the last week of July, plus some this week as well. So actually, our rainfall has been above average for this year, and has been for a while. I mean, really, the last significant drought that we've had is, at this point, has been a good five to eight years ago, so thankfully, it's been wet for water suppliers. I think another comment was by Bill, what have we looked at? We did do a report that looked at every type of treatment that's been available due to the unique nature of this well, primarily the high total dissolved solids, the high chloride, the high sodium. A lot of the normal mechanisms and treatments that you would use for water treatment don't apply to this specific well. That's why we've been pushed to the EDR versus blending. Probably one of the important things that Sean had mentioned is, the reason why Sean has come back and asked for this work and these monies at this time is really to answer the question of, do you go with a treatment and what type? And I think that what we're here to talk about and to move forward with really does help address a lot of the things that Leo had brought up. So I think there is still those questions as far as, well, what do we need? And the monies that's being asked for goes a long way to help you decide what is best for your town. And without this, it's still going to be hard, and it's still going to be a lot of questions going around and around. This is really the first step that helps you answer these questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Waste byproduct?
Yeah.
Mr. Fillion?
My question is, the wastewater, they're talking about 18,000 gallons a day. If you look at the Underwood sewer, 20-year build-out, they have added 36,000 gallons per day to their 20-year build-out to get up to this 6, 7, 8, 900,000 gallons per day that they're going to design a treatment plant. At 36,000 gallons a day, the cost, treating costs for that, before the new rate increase, I figured out it'd be about $104,000 a year at the rate to treat that wastewater that would be generated by two. So if you only did McIntosh, you only had 18,000, you'd be talking roughly $52,000 a year at last month's water discharge rates. Now, I don't know if it went up 5% or whatever the sewage went up, but knowing what's coming down the line, and they're talking about doubling sewage rates if we have to go through this nitrogen fiasco, we're going to be talking $100,000 for one well, the treating costs, and $200,000 if we ever go both of them. And you also got to somehow connect to the, you got to somehow connect to the existing sewer line. I guess it isn't really that far, but it was involved with the development up there and, but you do have to connect. If you do put in a treatment station, you have to connect to the town sewer for this wastewater. Something I just shot to my head and I lost it.
Thank you, Mr. Fillion. Any other one from the public want to speak? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up for the councilors. Councilor Bentley?
I have several things. You want me to say one and then push, and say one and then push? Some were brought up by other folks for me to bring up.
Go ahead with a couple.
I was approached by some folks from Stonewall Way, and they about the McIntosh property. They had a couple of questions I didn't have the answers for, and I don't really need them right here and now, I guess, just expressing some concerns. They thought it was odd they never got in a abouters note, because they said there's been some work there, and they thought the normal procedure would be for them to get in a abouters note, that there was work, things being dug, and electricity being brought out, or whatever happened. I wasn't really sure what was going on. They also questioned why none of their wells have been tested, when some of the Hamill Farm, Ash swamp, and Grant Road wells, some as far as a mile away were tested. True or not true, that's what I was told. So they would like to be including testing going forward to see, you know, what it does on the drawdown on their wells, and the taste of their wells, and their water, the condition of their water. And some of them also experienced in the last 24 months issues with their wells and having to get new pumps. One person who had a 19-month-old pump had to replace their pump, and they didn't know if it was affected by, excuse me, what was happening at McIntosh. I didn't have any of those answers, but they asked me to, they couldn't be here tonight, they asked me to bring it up, just to know, they'd like to be included in drawdown tests and taste tests. Mr. Fillion was talking earlier about taste, and I think, you know, for myself anyway, I think it's real important we distinguish between federal regulations of things that have to be at certain levels, and if something doesn't taste right, because there's a big difference again. A skunk doesn't smell good, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's dangerous for you. I'm on town water, and we can't drink our water because it's chlorinated, and our cat doesn't drink it. It's not a big deal, we treat it, we filter it. So it's one thing to meet a standard at a federal level, but it's another thing if someone says it doesn't taste right. So I just want to make sure that's clear. And one other thing I want to bring up, two other things, we spoke about getting like a John Boyver in here to do a, give us some advice. He's a town guy, he's president of Penachuck, Pen Water. You know, I still think we could get other people to come in and give some guidance or opinions. And lastly, after this vote was taken, several people told me they were confused. I thought we did a pretty good job making it clear, you know, when the chairman read the numbers, 689 to 400, and, you know, 63%, we're 3% away from this totally passing, and we got the majority, but not the 2/3. Several people told me they voted and they're not even on the water system, and I think it was unclear to some people that increase is to users, not to taxpayers. So I guess I'm just bringing it up, saying if nothing else, I think we need to make it much clearer next year, that the people that would pay are the users of it, not taxpayers. And I had taxpayers tell me, I didn't really understand that, and I voted no, and I'm not even on town water. So I just want to throw that out, that if there's four or five that approach me, I'm sure there's others that did it also. So just some comments I had.
Thank you. Press on?
I realize there's still several questions floating about, but I don't know if perhaps Jeff or Sean, you could kind of clarify something. Mr. Fillion came up and said that he doesn't even think that certain treatment is necessary, specifically the EDR, maybe chlorination, some of that, and he's saying that, you know, if we had run it longer, perhaps that would have, the numbers of, I believe it was arsenic and the chlorides would improve, and that he's pointing towards the drawdown of other residential wells, and saying that since they drew down and they don't have problems, ours should be kind of the same water source, and so therefore, eventually, we shouldn't have problems. Can you discuss that and tell me if he's correct in his assumptions?
Yeah, certainly. When you're dealing with your two existing water supply wells, you're in a gravel-packed scenario, and it's much more of a confined aquifer, and if you have wells that are next to each other, and they're in overburden like that, they're generally going to be around the same parameters. When you get into bedrock wells, and you get into fractures, and where those fractures are running, and even looking at the liniment maps, you really have no idea where the water's coming from. You may get 10% of the water that's on those streets that's going to this well, which would then impact their water supply well. Maybe 10%, could be 50%, you don't know. You get a general relative idea on possibly how much it's intertwined based on distance and by how far that it was drawn down. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I think there was only one or two wells that were largely impacted by this long-term pump test. So you would think that maybe those two wells may or may not be more closely linked than the others. Some of them that just went down two feet, they're really not sharing the same aquifer at all, because you're drawing 300 gallons a minute out, they're taking out maybe 50 gallons a day at most. You just really can't compare the two as far as volumes and flows. So I don't really agree that they're hydraulically linked, just because one shows that it comes down a little bit, especially when you get into a bedrock source. I think that that's probably the biggest thing to take away from that. I mean, just the results that you have from testing individual wells, I don't think correlate at all to the large volumes of testing you've already done on this well. A 56-day pump test is a significant pump test. You really couldn't ask for much more at that point. I mean, what you're going to learn from this well, you've learned. You can pump more, you can get more data. It doesn't mean that you're going to get anything different than what you have. It's time to, in my opinion, it's time to really understand that you've got the data, and now what's best for your town and your eyes to move forward with it. Again, knowing what you have for other houses that are down the road really isn't going to be a good indication of it, so you've got plenty of data, it's just a case of looking at it, manipulating it, and moving forward as best you see fit.
Any other councilors? Councilor Levy?
Just a couple of observations. The Warren article failed, and I think regardless of, you know, the percentage, from my standpoint, you know, if it failed, it failed. When I read the legal opinion, and I made some notations, and I appreciate Leo's comments, but I did make these notations prior to hearing what he had to say tonight. The part about where he made mention of the fact of reducing the amount to be appropriated to zero, my notation was, if the Warren article failed, then it seems to me that the appropriations have been reduced to zero. I don't know how to interpret it any other way, you know, if it didn't pass, it was reduced to zero, meaning we're not going to support it. So I looked at the RSAs that were annotated in the opinion that we were given by Justin Richardson, the attorney, and it led me to 35,1, which is the establishment of reserves that were, you know, to authorize work. And there's a six-pronged test, and I had, I brought it up, I think, at the last meeting when we sort of postponed the discussion, but I just thought for, and I should have maybe made copies, but I didn't want to start sending emails to people and maybe having conversation with the right-to-know laws and whatnot. So anyway, the six-pronged test, to me, is very simple. You know, one is the construction, reconstruction, or acquisition of capital improvement, or the acquisition of a specific item, or specific equipment. Two, the construction, reconstruction, or acquisition of a type of capital improvement, or acquisition of any type of equipment. Three, a reappraisal or appraisers of the Department of Revenue Administration, or such, or other such appraisers, appraisal firms, et cetera, which is really about tax appraisals for the town. And then it talks about acquisition of land, acquisition of a tax map of said town, extraordinary legal fees, and then municipal and regional transportation improvements and projects. So when I read the six-pronged test, which, just to reiterate, is 35,1, and I'm happy to, you know, let anybody, I showed it to John because he's next to me, but I'm happy to have anybody take a look at it. It's, oh, okay, so it's there, I'm sorry. But I can't extrapolate from that. Where we are testing the water meets that criteria, and that's what makes it, for me, next to impossible to vote for it. It's not whether or not it's the right thing or the wrong thing necessarily to do, it's, it didn't pass. I can't see anything that authorizes us to spend, you know, money that's been put in a reserve fund legally, and that's, you know, my humble opinion on the subject, so thank you.
Councilor Nizarra?
So, just to get it out on the table, personally, I voted for this. I want to see this well. I think that we need the water as a town. I think it's crucial for us moving forward. The budget that was passed, though, by the town did not have this, I know it did, the Warren article didn't pass, but the budget that didn't pass, this is not a line item inside of the budget for water, correct? This work? No. So, I mean, I know we all have to take the role of the town meeting as the legislative body for the town incredibly seriously, and it's, I mean, we demonstrated that when we didn't even, we didn't, wouldn't even shift some money to pave road the other end of Ash swamp, because it wasn't within the budget for paving. So it's with a very, very heavy heart that I don't think I can support this, just because the town voted it down, and as an executive body, I wouldn't want to remove the power of the town as a legislator to make a decision like that. So that's my piece.
Mr. Winoski?
I guess, Councilor Levy, while RSA 35,1 talks about the sort of six-pronged test, as you mentioned, the one thing that you have to go back and do is look at the purpose of the capital reserve when it is established by the town as to how it is worded in order to give authority as to what the purpose of, what are we creating the capital reserve to do? Those are sort of like the broad outlines of it, but the towns become more specific and say, we're going to, as they did once before, we're going to appropriate money to purchase a new ladder truck. And money goes into that for that specific purpose, where they could, I know that with the water and the sewer system is to make improvements to the water and sewer system. That's broad enough to say that the town could expend funds for the purposes of doing the necessary work to test, to improve, to incorporate new equipment in order to improve the system. If the Warren article wasn't even presented, I'm sure that Sean would be coming before the council at this point in time and asking that the next step in the process is to do the study, to see whether or not the electro dialysis system is going to be, or is, the best type of treatment in order to use, so that we have the answers when we do go and say, now we need to spend another $3 million to finish it, which is to finish the wellhead, do the piping, connect it to the system, install the system treatment, and get it running for the folks of the community. So, you know, I think that what's really interesting is, if I can find my book, one of the things that, and Mr. Fillion brought it up, in regards to No Means No, and RSA 32,10, Roman 1E, the basic law of budgeting, which is a book that's provided by the local government center in conjunction with DRA, it talks about no meaning no. And one of the things that it said is the following. Unfortunately, while the language of this statute, 3210, Roman 1E, may seem rather clear, in practice, it has not been that simple. There are many gray areas in which the limits of the governing body's authority have not yet been made clear. It is not clear, for example, whether or not the purpose of an article proposing a quote lease purchase, end quote, of a piece of equipment is considered the same purpose as a purchase of the same piece of equipment. It is also unclear whether the defeat of a separate article to purchase a piece of equipment prevents the already designated agents of a capital reserve fund from spending money from that fund to purchase the equipment instead. So, you know, it's the gray area that is there. It hasn't been clarified. I look to see if anybody has, you know, there's been any type of activity. In fact, one of the things in the conversation with emails that went back and forth with the DRA, you know, they left it up to the council to make that decision in the end as to whether they're going to move forward. You know, we were asking approval for a bond issue that was made up of several components that failed. It failed by 3%, you know, this one piece will help to address the answers to questions that were raised during the deliberative session, that I think that, as a council, we would want to know, or the council would want to know, in order to let the or the council would want to know, in order to let the folks know, is that they can make a better decision as to whether or not they feel that this is the direction they want to go. So, this is sort of a long-winded answer, but...
Let me start with the conclusion first, and then I'll back into it. I'm not going to support this. And the reason is because I try to think about from a citizen's standpoint, what would their interpretation be? And I appreciate all the legal arguments that not only, you know, we're presenting, but also our lawyer has presented. But I don't think it's one of those decisions that ought to be decided that way, whether we think the interpretation should be A or B. My suspicions are that folks, when they looked at this Warren article, said no, and that's what they intended. In retrospect, I think we may have made a mistake in how we wrote the Warren article. I wish we had, in retrospect, budgeted for this item as a line item to do the evaluation because we needed the money to do the evaluation, to make the decision on the Warren article. I think the amount on the Warren article scared people and left a lot of that decision-making up to the town council. So I can only say that I think the, I wish we had done it differently, but because we didn't, I think it's going to, and if the council agrees, it's going to put us behind a year, and I think that's really unfortunate. I wish we weren't in this situation. Thanks.
Vice Chairman.
I have a question for Sean or Jeff. We had a meeting, you know, six months ago or more now, actually, with outside agents who run water companies, and the issue came up about blending, and at that time, we were told that blending was not an option. And now, tonight, Sean, I heard you say something about blending. I thought blending was off the table. So could you just explain what this new thought process is?
The reason we were going to do it is because we were doing the EDR process, doing that at the time, and we thought it would be a good way to, it wasn't going to really cost any more money, to try a blend and see how it worked and see what we came up with the final numbers, so we could have some more data to show people exactly what we got.
So if the blending worked, then the answer would be, we didn't, we wouldn't have to do the EDR. If the blending, how are we going to determine if the blending is acceptable? Because what, the way I understood it was that if we blend this water with our existing water, while it may meet all federal requirements, people that own private water companies wouldn't sell it to their customers. It may not taste good, and there may be other issues with it. How would you make that decision?
We would probably, I think...
You know, I mean, is this, if we're going to blend it, we know what the results are going to be. You have part A and part B, you blend them, you mathematically can figure out what you're going to have.
It was also the standalone well issue.
Yeah.
It was important to people from the town to have an independent well that did not rely on having the two existing wells running.
Oh, I absolutely understand that. I'm just curious as to if we're thinking that blending, I'm just, is blending going to be the solution?
That would be up to...
How do you tell? Because mathematically, we can tell what the water is, but if the issues are taste and discoloration of the water and blah, blah, blah. You run all the tests in the world, and we know what it's going to be, but how do we know what's acceptable to the water users?
That's a, that's a good question, and that's why we're hoping to include some townspeople in on the test to see how it was.
Is there a quote-unquote taste test as part of this? I mean, is...
I mean, that's, I mean, that's...
Is there? I mean, it's being overly simplistic, but...
That's basically, you know, what we are looking at possibly doing, is starting to try and blend it, see what it was like, and have some people come in and see what, from the, that's on the water system, and see what it's like.
Yeah, that's, perhaps you're correct.
Yeah. I mean, it's something that hasn't been totally thought out on how we're actually going to do that process, but that's the kind of things we are throwing around. I mean, because these are people, you know, you're going to have the naysayers, no matter if you do it mathematically or what, but I mean, if they actually can taste the water, that's a...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Just, I'd like to make a couple of statements. I haven't had the opportunity to speak at this point, and I kind of feel like I'm part of the minority right now because I do support this, and it's for a number of reasons. First reason is, a little over six years ago, when I ran for this office for the first time, the biggest discussion that evening was, what are you going to do about water? Are you going to take care of the water situation? And, you know, we have done this. We have spent money through various parts of the budget, components of the budget, be it CIP, be it whatever. We've spent money to get to this point. So, you know, I am strongly supportive of anything that's going to move us towards solving our water concerns. I also believe, in the simplest way that I can understand it, is that the Warren article asked for the bonding authority, of which we're not trying to overturn here this evening, or when and if we decide to even vote on this. We're not attempting to overturn this. What we're attempting to do is not put our head in the sand for a year and let this thing go until the voters have another opportunity to vote. And I'm not saying I don't agree with what the voters wanted, because I do agree with what the majority of the voters wanted. The majority of the voters wanted this to move on. They just didn't want us to bond it, for whatever reason they had. And I'm not looking to bond it. I'm looking to spend the money to do this pilot test. There's been comments made, you know, if you pump this thing for 30 days or whatever, the levels go down. We know we're not going to pump it for 30 straight days. That's not the goal here. The goal is to work this in with our existing wells. The private well issue, they're not required to be tested. Okay, that, to me, that's a big factor right there. They don't have to meet the water standards that we have to meet as a town or as a supplier. So that concerns me. You know, Sean has told us this evening about a 20% forgiveness. Well, that certainly makes next year's potential Warren article a little sweeter, but it would also be sweeter to go there and say, you know, we've run the test. We found out that our system that we're going to have to incorporate is not going to cost 1.2 or whatever the numbers are that have been floating around. It's going to be cheaper, so we have a better handle on exactly what we're asking the voters to approve. We asked the voters to approve a maximum dollar figure. We didn't give them any wiggle room. We didn't say, this is the maximum, but it could only be this. We didn't do that, which, you know, is the council's fault for not at least having something along those lines. So that's where I stand on this issue right now, and maybe you'll have more later, I don't know. But right now, Councilor Bentley.
I just had one question for Mr. Philian. Mr. Philian, do you know how many, I'm sure you do, looking at NGE-1A, how many of these private ones were tested? Do you know roughly? I mean, it wasn't just the two that are here, right? There's two that are here for the...
I thought it was either 12 or 15.
Okay. I just wanted to...
I think, and there was probably, there was a few of them that were, by the way, that did not show any drawdown. But most of the ones, especially in the Hammel Farm area, they should, they were, they're the closest to, if you look at the Emery Garrett, the aquifer is, what, two and a half miles long and three quarters of a mile wide, and Hammel Farm sits right in the middle of it. I mean, I drilled, I drilled the well last week. It's going to be the closest well to the Tucker well of the 30 of them, and it's about 500 feet from the well. And I talked to the well driller at the time, and he's saying, I guess you can check it, it's about, it's about $80, $85 dollars to test one of these wells for sodium, just like what the, and so, no, if you took, did four or five of them, yeah, 400, 500 bucks or whatever, but you could see if these people are running up, knowing that they're high nitrates and chlorides and whatever, and they say the water tastes good. One thing that surprised me, and I don't know if you, Eric and Raj were there, but when we were talking at the meeting way back when John Borbad was, I thought he said that the Shandar Farms was running .5 manganese, which is 10 times what we're running now. Do you recall him saying that? It was right after, you asked a question of whether they would treat it. And again, I, I'm going to be angry, my recollection was that he said if the water tasted bad, we would treat it. We didn't want customers being dissatisfied or whatever. Then he said about, we're having probably .5 manganese levels, and I'm saying, wow, I mean, yet they say they have good water? How can they have good water with that high a manganese level? Here we got a .1, and, you know, whatever, and we're talking about, we got to treat it? I guess if we were going through this testing, I would think we'd want to also look at the Shandar Farms, what they're, because they test, I mean, you know, they test.
Right.
I don't know what their levels are. Another thing might be good to find out is, has their levels dropped? I mean, it's been there, what, 20 years or so? Have they shown a drop over this period of time of their nitrates and chlorides and all the other stuff that, or has it stayed the same or the worst or whatever? I don't know. And I guess the owner, Penetra, they've only owned it for eight or nine years. There was two, three other owners before that, so I don't know if they have the data from way back when it was first started.
Mr. Philian, if I recall what you're discussing, I do recall that Penetra had representatives at that meeting. I also recall the representative stating that they had hoped that the McIntosh well would have been a good find for water because they were hoping, because of the problems they were having at Shandar Drive, to maybe tap into that system and buy from us. But once they saw the results of the water at McIntosh, they wanted no part of it. That's the conversation that I recall. And Vice Chair, you were there. Do you recall basically the same thing?
I do, but I also remember what Leo had said about, I don't remember the .5, but I remember him saying they were, they're having problems. And to me, the main thing that came out of that meeting were two things. One is that they said that they, there's no way that they would ever put that water directly into a system or even blend it, the McIntosh well, that they would not subject their customers to that. And I mean, Leo, I honestly thought, we left that meeting, I thought we all understood that, we all agreed that that's what needed to be done. Obviously, you didn't agree with that.
I didn't, no. You know, they were talking about, possibly not the McIntosh, but the Tucker, which is much closer to them. They would like to see the Tucker be developed because they're just right up the road from Tucker, and if they have problems, they'd like to be able to tie into the Tucker because if they have problems, it's an alternate source farther, but McIntosh is another mile down the road or something, and they were, they would really like to see the Tucker developed.
Councilor Levy.
I appreciate what Ed said about, you know, gray areas, you know, when you're buying products and, you know, is leasing it like buying it, and, you know, those nuances. I think, and by the way, I want to make clear that I'm not saying the testing shouldn't be done. I'm not even weighing in on that. For me, it's more two issues. First and foremost, it's the vote that transpired and the will of what the voter said. And two, as I read, you know, the six-pronged test, which I didn't realize, I'm glad everybody's got it, so at least, I can't see, you know, a leasing or the use of a piece of property the same as testing, personally. And I'm pretty creative in the way I look at things. You know, I think when you do that testing, it's not, it doesn't meet, from my standpoint, equipment or acquisition of capital improvement, or, you know, financing a product or land use or any of that stuff. You know, for me, it's testing. And that's, so I just, I just want people to know, it's not that I don't want to do it, or I don't think it's the right thing to do. I just don't feel that by supporting it, I'm being consistent with, A, the voters, and B, 35,1, in my interpretation. And if it was, you know, I think if this was, we need to buy a piece of equipment to do, if it had to do with finishing the pipe or something of that nature, you know, or we, you know, I could, I could, I could see that, I could live with that. I think it's the testing part that's sort of leaving me. I don't see the wiggle room, the way I read it, and that, so I just wanted to be clear. It's not that I don't think it's appropriate, and I'm not saying I wouldn't support the testing, because I think at some, at some point, we're going to need to do the testing, even if we kind of all know it's not, it's not going to pass. It's, I just don't see how voting yes is consistent with everything that's sort of transpired. That's my, my issue. So I just want to be crystal clear on that. Thank you.
Vice Chairman.
As it relates to the voter's will in section, chapter 35, I have to say at this point, I'm on the fence. I certainly appreciate what the other councilors have said about the voter's will. My first thoughts were that I agree with that. It didn't pass, so we shouldn't even be talking about it. But this is something that I think we really need to move forward. I think, you know, we've, the reason, the only reason we're talking about a well is because there is a fear that, you know, our two wells now are in the same aquifer, and if anything happens, whether it's a drought or some sort of contamination, we have no water. So, you know, that's weighing on me also. I'd hate to see us in a position a year from now where we have a drought or we have a problem and we end up with no water. So, but that said, I'm still, I have to say, I'm on the fence as far as it relates to the voters. You know, we had an opportunity to pass this, and it didn't pass. It got a majority of the vote, but it didn't pass, so at this point in time, I'm on the fence, but I think I'm, I won't even say that. I'd just say I'm on the fence at this point. Thank you.
Councilor Bergeron.
Four years of being on the council is probably one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make, and I've been on, you know, on the council as long, four years, not as long as Councilor Lebranche, but water has been the major issue every year. And I was very surprised that the Warren article didn't pass, but then again, looking at how it was written, I have to agree. I think people were confused about who was actually bearing the brunt of the costs. And that being said, though, I cannot support this. I mean, we're talking about gray areas, but I don't think it's a gray area. I think, you know, even though it was a majority vote, it was 689 to 400, it didn't garner the two-thirds required. And I'm just going to have to draw a line in the sand and say no, for that reason only. I certainly support improving the water system and doing the testing and ultimately getting to that goal, but I have to, as Councilor Nizarro said, you know, the public has spoken, they're also a legislator, and we need to include them in this conversation, and I'm going to do that this time by saying no.
Okay. Any other councilors?
I guess my question would be, what does a council want to do with this? Do you want to vote this evening? Do you want to bring it back to...
Do you want to bring it back to the workshop next week, the business meeting? Counselor Levy.
I'd like to move the vote for two reasons. Number one, I won't be here next week, and I'd kind of like to be involved. Excuse me. And number two, I think we've talked about it, and I'd like to, you know, move the vote. So that's my.
Your motion?
My motion is to not, I guess it would be to vote against expending the funds for the study. Does that, is that appropriate? Is, in other words, to spend the money to do the testing? Is that the way it would be phrased, or? I would make a motion to not support funding the, the, the testing.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess it's because it's just us, we all understand it, but, I mean, motions that are made with a negative inside of the motion just become confusing to vote on, so.
Well, should I do, well, that's why I was asking.
That's my point, like, that's my moderator training. One of the few things I remember, motion, adding with a negative in it becomes very confusing.
Well, that's why I was, yeah, that, is that how, that's why I was asking, do you appropriate, so should, so should, should the mo, yes, I'll withdraw the motion, say to vote for or against the, to, well, tell me, you know, how would, how would it be phrased?
Counselor, what I might suggest is to, is to put it in a positive perspective, to vote, to make a motion to spend the money to do the pilot testing. I think that would be the easiest way to make a vote, because if you don't support it, then your vote would be no. If you do support it, your vote would be yes.
Okay. So I, so I can make a motion to support it, but I can't make a motion to not support it?
Well, I, you can, but it's a little easier to understand if you make it to support it. And just because you're making a motion doesn't mean that you support it by putting it that way. You can still vote whichever way you want.
Okay. I make a motion to, this is surreal for me, but it's so against my logic, but to support the, I can't even believe I'm, Jesus.
Knock on the mic.
Well, I think, I think people are hearing me.
I don't think you can just say support, you can just say whether.
To vote in favor to expand.
You can just say support.
I, I make a motion to vote as to whether or not we should support the pilot study for the water testing. Is that, do I still not do it right? How about somebody else make the motion? I'll vote, but you can, somebody else can make the motion. We have a motion. Well, Eric seconded it, actually. If he withdrew his motion, I would throw my second.
Okay. Would you like someone else to maybe?
Yeah, let, let someone else make the motion.
Counselor Nizarro.
Make a motion to expend, is there a dollar figure?
140?
Thought it was 120, but I could be wrong.
I make, I make a motion to expend $140,000 for the study of the McIntosh well.
Second.
Any discussion?
What, are you crazy?
So then I'll ask for the vote.
Counsel Levy.
Nay.
Counsel Bentley.
Aye.
Counsel Bergeron.
Nay.
Counsel Zink.
Nay.
Counsel Nizarro.
Nay.
Counsel Bodeman.
Nay.
Chairman Lebranche.
Aye. Motion fails two, five. Okay, thank you, councilors. Thank you, Jeff, for showing up. Thank you, Mr. Fillion, for showing up. And I'd also like to thank Bill for showing up. There were two people that cared. Moving on, we had also said that we would discuss Article II. So with that, I'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Nizarro.
This is a general overarching comment to Article II. Any changes we make now, and we know Senator Prescott came and spoke to us two meetings ago, and he actually, there was a group of individuals he spoke to this morning and here, and I happen to have the time to come participate in that. If there's an override of governor's veto to the identification, showing identification to vote, I think Article II, we're going to have to totally revamp Article II to be in line with whatever. Do you, you don't think so?
No. Whatever the elections law has called for, we don't have to make any changes as to, you know, people have to show IDs, that's just.
So we don't have to include any of that?
No. No, we wouldn't want to do that.
All right, then. And I withdraw everything I just said. You can strike that from the record. Good thing the reporter already left.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Winowski, go ahead.
I provided all the councilors this evening a packet of information, and within that is all of Article II. There's been some changes that, that the council agreed to last week? Yeah, last week, relative to the hours. I think that was primarily the one that, that they adopted, the hours being what it is. And then they, council, I think, approved the listing of the candidates' names. Those are the only two areas that there was any changes made. So if you look, unfortunately, the review of the watermark didn't come through, everybody else's, but I gave that to you all, so you'd have that to help you along. The watermark, like I said, didn't come through.
Mine's different.
Yep, that's it.
That's your idea.
Just, just what you've got tonight. And if you go to 2.5, section 2.5, you have, bottom section, it says revision, and I struck out 8 o'clock and put in 7.
This is, that's what they found. Oh, okay, I see, yeah, I got it.
Top portion is, is the current language.
Got it.
The part that says proposed revision slash amendment is what is being changed.
Okay, so you did that, you changed the prescribed order.
Yep. I don't think there was any other changes.
And I think that was all that the council had talked about. Counselor Levy.
I had one, can't find it. I have one question. Were there any? Let me hold off until I find it, I apologize. I had it and I lost it, so let me come back to it, please.
Just so the council knows, you know, I'd like to see us potentially agree to these changes, and then if Mr. Winowski could get this thing.
Oh, I got it.
Up online so that they would see what section two is, and sort of like what you did here with the revision. And then we would have a further meeting to do resolution on it or whatever it is, because I think like this part here does not require town vote, correct?
No, it does.
Oh, this does require?
Everything the council's going to do, any changes, as it relates to the charter, needs to go to a public hearing, which would happen 60 days before the town meeting in May.
Okay.
So I, I think that at this point in time, that the best thing for the council to do is go through and make the changes. We could even then hold a public hearing and go through all of them so that residents know what it is, and then take input from them at that point in time.
Okay.
And then come back in what would be, what, March, for another public hearing prior to the election to explain them all.
Okay. All right, thank you. Vice Chair.
Just on Article 2.5, section 2.5, on the B where you have at least 30, then 30 days in parentheses.
Yep, I need to be.
It should be, the third, the first 30 should be written out.
Yep. Thank you.
Other than that, I'm fine with everything. Thank you.
Counselor Bentley.
For Mr. Administrator, I know we talked today on 2.9, that's the one that I brought up before, and you, just to refresh my, on the display of campaign material, you think, if you refresh what we spoke about.
Sure. Counsel Bentley was in the office. 2.9 deals with the display of campaign material at polling places. I had a conversation with Becky Van Veenoudy. We talked about two areas, actually 2.8 and 2.9, and she is going to provide me the RSA's that deal with, especially in 2.9, display of campaign material. Because as I said to her in the discussion, I think back in 1990 when we adopted, the community adopted this, there wasn't the, you know, people used to run the gauntlet, so to speak, when you went through into the town hall. I remember everybody, all the people who were running or for supporting a cause, everybody had to walk through them. Today, there are rules and regulations that the moderator establishes as to where people can stand with their signs, who they're supporting. And I think that what I, what I want to do is just have a reference in here of the RSA, so that way people understand what it is. Same thing with, there was a question, I think Counsel Levy had brought it up, relative to contested elections, relative to if they're tied, how are they resolved? Again, referencing the RSA, so somebody look at this and say, well, how is that resolved? Oh, RSA this, you can go there and check it out and see that. It's up to the town clerk to decide how that, that process is done. So it's a matter of finding it.
So we would add it into this.
Yeah.
And just so everyone else understands, and I'd really be interested in what Counsel Nizarro says, if you read this the way it's worded right now, and it's our charter, forget about the RSA, says, "Person candidates for office of permanent petition resolution may not solicit votes, display, or exhibit any campaign materials." And we all know, almost everybody had someone displaying something for them right, right near where I was. So to me, reading this, I'm like, oh, jeez, there was five or six people that were, didn't follow us. I could kill us. But I'm, just going forward, I think we need to clarify that, because it says you cannot display, and every May, people do stand there and display. Now, if we want to reference RSA that says you can display, but it has to be 25 feet away or display, it doesn't say that here.
Correct.
So that's, that was why I asked about it in the last meeting, why I spoke again to Ed today. So I think we definitely need to change something there, because it's, many people were out of, out of order on this, I think, the way it's worded now, this last May. It said you can't display, and five or six things can be displayed. So if, if the RSA puts that to, to rest, then I'll feel better.
I'll say, counsel.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor Levy.
I remembered what I forgot. See if I forget it again. Did, did, we ever find out how many people voted between 7 and 8? Did any, any chance?
No, no, I don't have that answer right now.
Is that 8:00 AM?
No, 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 I'm sorry. The, one of the questions I had asked at the, when we were discussing this last meeting was, how many people voted between 7 and 8? Because there was, you know, seemed to be a lot of traffic. And I, you know, I sort of felt, and believe me, it was a long day, so no one would have liked to have seen that day, and a little quicker than me, but, because it was cold and raw outside. But I was curious to know how many people voted between 7 and 8. So I, it would help me, you know, if it was like, you know, 15 or 10, then it would be a no-brainer. But I was just curious, so that was that. And then the, the other question, can I ask just one, another one, Mike?
Sure.
When I asked at the last meeting, which was the same, you know, regarding this filth here, it was on section 2.6, and it was talking about the ballots contain inappropriate sections, names of candidates listed in alphabetical order, because that's an RSA that the state, I guess mandated and whatnot. I just made a notation, how would this have affected the last ballot if, if we hadn't had that? In other words, it didn't seem to affect it.
No, the new, the new law was in fact, was in effect.
Was in effect.
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. So in, in essence, we're making the change to be consistent with the RSA.
Yes.
But it really didn't affect anything.
The last ballot, it wouldn't have affected anything.
No, we're just really making an update, that's all we're doing.
So I just wanted to just get that on the, on the record. Thank you.
You could say it did affect it, because Counsel Nizarro was first, and he got the most votes, so I think we ought to.
Counselor Nizarro, would you like to respond to that? No, it's your turn.
It was based on looks.
I shouldn't be sitting here at all, man.
No, but what? Debonair personality.
Modesty.
Just one, one more last, just quick thing. This, this sign thing.
Sorry, Chair, I regress.
Doesn't make any sense. No, just to, I'll be very brief, but if people are supporting people, I can't, I don't remember ever not seeing people at a certain distance holding up people's signs. So if, if, I mean, am I missing something? But the, the law didn't state you can't, I, I, wasn't the interpretation that maybe they couldn't wear badges when they, or pins when they went downstairs?
That, that apparently is.
That's the issue.
Part of the question.
Oh, okay. I think that's the issue, that you can't wear it downstairs or in the voting area, but I don't see how you can tell people outside they can't vote, you know, have a sign. It doesn't make any sense. So that's, that's it.
I had one thing, I now have three. Seven to eight voting numbers. Personally, I think if we're, if, as a matter of it was two people, if there were, those two people got to vote, I think it's a good thing. However, as moderator, as former moderator, do understand shortening them to seven to seven, as long as it's advertised, I think is, is fine. And as far as numbers of people, I think it was probably 50, maybe, that came in that, not, not more than that.
50?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as the section 2.9, I think that we're getting wrapped up in the first portion of the first sentence and not the last phrase, which says that in violation of local ordinances or state statute. So if there's no local ordinance or state statute that prohibits the distribution or petitioning resolution referendum or all that other stuff that's up on top there of 2.9, then you're allowed to do it, as long as, what the second sentence says, the moderator has the right to, to control it. So, and Clay did a great job of, of getting everyone to sort of be trained, you'd be up against the wall of the church when, when you're doing it. So I think maybe it's just the way it's worded may be the issue. I think the intent is still there. I think that the intent of 2.9, even as it's written, is that you're allowed to display it as long as you're not violating local ordinances or state statute, and the moderator's responsible for ensuring that that occurs. So I don't know if, we're getting to Counsel Bentley's point, I don't think anyone was in violation of this as much as, the way it's written is somewhat confusing. So maybe we could, and I could proffer something, or one of us could, the way it might be a little more clear. The last one I had, which was my initial question, was section 2.8, where the town clerk is the one who decides it. Is that by RSA?
Yes. I've asked Becky if she would provide me a copy of the RSA.
Yeah, I was just wondering, was it the moderator? So that is it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Winowski?
No, I'm all set.
Counsel Bergeron.
Counsel Nizarro already made my point. I was, is that the, end of the sentence, I think, clarifies the whole issue in, in violation of local or state statutes. So I'm sure those statutes say that you can stand there with a, I'm sure you can stand there with a, with a campaign sign as long as it's, you know, away from the voters enough so that they're not being molested by you, so.
I'll say, counsel.
I am.
Thanks, Chair.
I guess I have a question for Mr. Winowski on section 2.9, as it relates to, and I think in the past, the town has said that if you're wearing an election pin, you can't come in and vote with that. The way I read this, you absolutely have the right to do that. As long as you're not representing or working for a candidate.
It's, it's the law, the RSA, if, it prohibits somebody wearing a button, coming in with a T-shirt or a regular shirt, and it says, "Vote Phil Nizarro" on the back, votes, you know, Eric Bodeman for president.
Does the RSA say that?
You're running for it, you know, you can't do that.
But does the RSA say that?
I, that's what I want to get clarity on.
If you're standing outside, if I'm standing outside holding a sign for Gary Levy, I understand that I can't come in with a Gary Levy badge, because I represented myself as working for him. If I'm somebody sitting at home who thinks Gary Levy is a good candidate, and I want to wear his badge when I vote, or his hat, or his T-shirt, the way I read this, you have every ability to do that. So I guess all's I'm saying is, I'd like to see the RSA that addresses this.
That's what I want.
So, okay.
Provide that to the council.
I have a comment on that. Okay. I'll wait. So you might have the answer.
And just, just to stay on 2.9, and I know at the time, Moderator Nizarro, that morning, you know, I, I wasn't able to be here all day. I worked that morning and came at 11:00. Apparently, he came out and gave some of the rules. And because I wasn't there, I actually stepped out of line, because a classmate of mine passed away the day before, and, and I was talking to another classmate, and I was accosted by several people that thought I was stealing votes, the person had already voted. But what I would say next year, and obviously it won't be Counsel Nizarro, that maybe each candidate the day before, because I think that we assumed that everyone was going to show up at 7:00 AM or something, I think next year, just to clarify this even more, each candidate is given something ahead of time with New Markets, little rules and regulations on RSA's, you know what I mean? Because I didn't know it then. I got, I got told by the people that, oh, you can't, you can't be all in, you can't do this, and you can't do that. So just to make it even clearer, going forward for, for any candidates next year.
It would be up to the moderator to deal with that.
Just give it to them, you know, the day before, the night before, or, you know, because there's no set time that everyone has to be there to show up. And you did do the right thing and spoke to the ones that were there that morning,
the right thing, and spoke to the ones that were there that morning, apparently, and I wasn't there. And, you know, I got kind of told after the fact. So just so everyone understands, plays nicely in the sandbox. Councilor Nizarro?
As far as the buttons or shirts and stuff like that, we did check the RSA that morning, and it's not incredibly clear as to whether or not. It kind of leaves it to the moderator to decide, and, you know, tie goes to the runner, tie goes to the First Amendment. It's individual, if someone was wearing a T-shirt with someone's on it, I wouldn't tell them, take your shirt off to go vote, because that shirt, or go change your shirt before you come vote. So I think it's the same, if someone wants to support something, as long as they're not being loud and pushing it, if they're just wearing something, if they're an article of clothing, then I don't see that as an issue with the polls. So I would hate to be told to take my shirt off because I supported a candidate.
I'd like to take my shirt off, though.
I think some of the issue was, people had some concerns that folks that may have been working the election. I think that's what came up. I could be wrong, but I think his memory is coming back to me from that day, that anybody that was working, representing the, you know, the election, is it technically, it's called the election committee, or, you know, the people?
Supervisors.
Supervisors and whatnot. I think what I got from that whole thing when it came up was, anybody that is officially working it cannot have any kind of paraphernalia supporting anybody. I don't believe, if memory serves me, that it applied to, you know, somebody coming in with a, "I support whomever." The only other thing I would add, or ask more than add, is when I came in, I think when we got our charter, and, you know, it was talking about how our charter theoretically could be more stringent than state RSA, I suppose, you know, we could, as a council or as a community, decide, other than the people supervising, you know, I think we could probably make a more stringent determination if that was people's predilection. It happens not to be mine. I don't really care if somebody walks in with somebody's T-shirt, as long as they're not hanging around for seven hours, you know, standing there and glad-handing. I mean, that's that gray area where, you know, if you have three or four people standing there, and they're shooting the breeze for a half hour, and they've got support, you know, such and such a person, that's probably not, you know, really appropriate. But I think the way I read our charter and the rules that were given to us at my first meeting, you know, the, whatever that was, the introductory meeting, whatever it was called, it did state, I think, that the town could have, in its charter, more stringent guidelines than the state, as long as it is still consistent with law. So I'm just bringing that up because of, you know, I don't, I don't think somebody working the day should have a sign on, obviously, that's over the line. You know, that's just not appropriate. But, you know, I think that's up to us on some level, and if the voters want to say people can't be wearing people's, you know, stuff, or they have to stay a certain amount of time, you know, that's up to the council.
I think that the rules of voting is that you come into the polls, you check in, you vote, you drop off your ballot, and then you, it's exit, it's not, it's not a like, oh, jeez, I haven't seen you in 20 minutes, you know.
Well, if you.
But that is supposed to move quickly.
Yeah.
And again, that falls up to the role of moderator who has control of that meeting.
Anyway.
Vice Chairman?
I would like to ask the Chair if he would entertain a motion to approve the changes as put before us by the town administrator, whether you want to wait for another meeting.
Does the public weigh in, Eric, on this at all? Should we have?
Vote.
As I mentioned to the Chair earlier, I think that what the council should do is, you know, make your recommendations, and then we will put them out there for residents. We can put them on the town's website. People can look at them, and hold a public hearing just to get input, you know. Maybe they have some other ideas for the council to consider. We have a long ways to go till we get to town meeting.
That's why I'm asking, should we do that?
Mr. Chair, is he looking for a second? Was that unofficial?
No, I was asking him.
I'd like to withhold that motion for just a second, only so I can be clear that the document we're talking about we're comfortable with. So really, I'd like to go right through Article 2, as far as, does anyone have any changes they want to make with 2.1? No one? Okay. About 2.2, there's been no changes made by the council or by the administrator? Anybody, anybody got any questions with that?
Nope.
2.3, same thing. No changes really? Anybody got any questions or additions or comments? 2.4, pretty basic. I don't imagine we're going to add too much to that one. Article 2.5, we, you know, proposed revision amendment with the one exception of changing the first number 30 to the word 30. I think that was the only suggested change that we had. Is everybody good with 2.5 proposed revision?
Yes.
2.6, there was that one change with listed in the prescribed order. Is everybody comfortable with that? No other additions or anything? 2.7, pretty self-explanatory. Everybody's good with that? 2.8, contested elections. I think this is where we have the little bit of a glitch, because I really think that we need to be able to, I think it was mentioned, provide the RSA to this. So I would like to see the RSA be added to this. Councilor Levy?
Did we have to figure out, was that a coin toss? And that's?
Again, it's governed by the.
Oh, so we don't, that's not determined beforehand?
No.
I don't believe so.
Really? Should it, I mean, could it be? Could we decide that we want to do it as a point?
It depends on town clerk.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Okay, thank you.
Council Bentley?
If, in that case, Mr. Chair, so we add RSA 118, Section 2, is the state one, then do we have to follow the state one, or can we still?
We want the RSA added for clarity, but.
And the RSA may say that.
And we say, well, we're not going to do arm wrestling, we're going to do a coin toss.
We have no say in it.
But it may say that the tied elections of any elected office shall be determined by law in a manner as decided by the town clerk.
We can't tell the town clerk.
So we're adding what's already there?
Right.
That's what it already says.
I think all we're really looking for is the RSA reference, not the proper RSA number to reference this. I think if we've got that, then to me, 2.8 is done.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Sure.
Just to add a, after the last sentence, just put C RSA, whatever the RSA number is. You'll make a sentence here. C RSA.
It's decided by the town clerk and the presence of the tied candidates as per RSA.
Yeah, yes.
Good job, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Counselors Inc.
I mean, that application could be, that amendment could be on almost any of these articles, referring them to the state RSA. I mean, I would be consistent. If you want to put in the RSAs as it relates to the supervisors of the checklist, or whatever the reference is, I don't understand why we're picking on this. This is wrong.
If I may.
Sure.
If you, and one of the things that I did when I was going through this, went and looked, let's go back just to the moderator. There are probably 10 pages in different sections of the entire RSA. I don't think that that's necessary to put something in here, because basically it just says, two-year term, the responsibilities, and just let that go as it is. I think this was, as I see it, what I tried to do in putting in a reference to an RSA, so if it's very specific, for one thing, that's the law that governs it, if somebody wanted it, because the law can change. You just go back and check it out that way. And I think that was the goal on this one, contested election, is just, let's just put the RSA so we don't have that discussion. It's like, RSA says, you'll jump through two hoops and grab the ring. Let's just look at it and see what it says.
I don't want to spend a lot of time, but I mean, again, on 2.9, it's the same thing. Why don't we reference the RSA on 2.9?
Well, we haven't gotten to that one yet.
Yeah, we haven't gotten to it. We talked about that.
We want to do that.
Let me go back.
Well, we, like, 2.3 we referenced, and so we're somewhere, we're referencing somewhere.
Exactly. All I'm saying is, it relates to these articles.
Just can be consistent.
Inconsistent. If you're going to reference an RSA, reference it. If you're going to reference the town charter, reference it.
We should.
If you're not, don't.
We should.
Cool. I just, I'm bringing it to the council. It's not me doing it. I'm just putting something in front of you, and you guys say yes, no. That's all I'm doing.
Yep. All right. So let's talk about 2.8. Do we want to leave it as is, or do we want to request the specific RSA?
Oh, yeah.
I would say reference the RSA.
Okay. Counselors Inc?
Sure.
Councilor Nizarro?
Yeah, I mean, why not?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it. Councilor Levy?
I'm good with that.
Okay, so we're going to reference the RSA number on that.
I would do it, not throughout the whole thing.
All right. I mean, this is one of those where it's pretty obvious that that way they're, it's going to cover us. All right, so we will have, when we finalize this, we'll have the RSA number there. Because I actually had written my notes that Becky will provide RSAs. So 2.8's going to have that one little addition. 2.9, what do we want to do?
Same thing.
I would have the second sentence be the first. I think that that, right up front, says.
The moderator's in charge of it.
Spoken like an ex-moderator.
Well, I, but, okay, maybe.
But then again, it's contradictory, because then it says that the state statute, state statute is also taken into consideration.
I agree with you. I agree with Counselor Nizarro that we should make the second sentence the first sentence. Do you want to add the RSA as well, the state statute specifically?
See, but the state statute's changed up quickly.
Just change the way it's.
All you're doing, you're not changing anything. I think that's the best way to do it. It puts it right at the very front.
Right up front.
Yep.
Okay, so what you're proposing is that this will now read, "The moderator shall exercise his power under state law relative to the conduct of elections, distribution of campaign materials, and electioneering within the polling place." Then it will state persons as candidates for elected office. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
That is what I'm suggesting.
Everyone good with that? Okay. So we have gone through 2.9. There's just a couple of minor amendments to make. So at this point, I'll look for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve Article 2 with the amendments as illustrated by the town administrator and the other amendments that we just discussed.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wunowski, will you call the vote, please?
Counselor Levy?
Aye.
Counselor Bentley?
Aye.
Counselor Burjron?
Aye.
Counselor Zink?
Aye.
Councilor Nizarro?
Aye.
Counselor Botman?
Aye.
General Branch?
Aye. Motion carries 7-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Any discussion?
I just had one quick, little underoled business, new business. Isn't that?
It's not on the agenda this evening, but it's going to be real quick.
Oh, it'll be super quick.
Okay.
I was just going to ask, and I emailed both Mike and Eric, I read in the paper the other day that there may be a reconsideration of the study.
I can answer that in.
Oh, okay.
Real short order. If there is to be any reconsideration whatsoever on the nitrogen coalition, I will first of all require, as is prescribed, that the prevailing side makes the motion to reconsider. That would be the first order of business. And then I would not do it unless there was a full sitting council.
Thank you. I really appreciate it, because I won't, my anniversary isn't, I'm going to be away next week, and I was hoping to at least participate. So thank you very much for that.
You know, it's unfortunate, in my opinion, that it was a 3-3 vote, because that's an undecided vote. But because of the way the laws are set up, the nose got the edge on that one. So that will not be brought up again unless it's by the prevailing voters and with a full council.
And if I could just say one last thing, if it is convenient, and I don't know if this is legal, but if it was imperative that it had to be next week, I would call in. If it was necessary on a conference call, I could call in, just so I didn't screw up people's timetables for whatever it's worth.
From Tahiti?
No, I'm in New York.
I'll be in New York, and I'll pay for the call. It'll be my pleasure. So, thank you very much, Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Wunowski, will you call the vote, please? Oh, no. All in favor?
I oppose.
Thank you, Counselors.